The July 28, 2015 Longview City Council's Special Call Meeting is now called to order. We will now have the prayer and the pledge. So please stand. We'll go with the pledge first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, this time we have, the opportunity to come before you, the decisions that lay before us, God, the business of the city. But it's your, it's your business, God. Let us take your thoughts, your guidance, your direction as we move forward to make a better day for our community, but also to make a better day for you, God. Thank you for this time we have, for the people that are involved, for all that you do, for your guidance and direction. God, open and watch over this council. In your son's name we pray. Amen. Employee recognition time. Today, we're going to recognize the library children's department. The Longview Public Library Children's Department. Would Jen Edge, Nita Dennis, Mackenzie Hunter, Hawajala Rockwell, and Sandra Nino, Okay. Our library has 53,513 borrowers and 11,290 of those being under the age of 18, or 21 percent of total users. 203,135 visitors came to the library in fiscal year 2014, and they completed 262,820 transactions. To keep children engaged in reading while school is out, this team, along with 35 teen interns, provides stories, performances, movies, arts, and crafts, and special events like Minecraft and Legos daily from June through August. Over the past two years, attendance has tripled in the summer reading club with over 1,500 children enrolled this summer. Nearly 10 percent of Longview's student population participates in this highly successful program, the largest summer youth program in our community. To provide the varied programming and incentives for the summer reading club, the children's department team raised $22,000 dollars from local businesses and partners to fully fund the summer reading club. Please join me in thanking our library children's department team. That's a lot of numbers, and that's impressive. But what's really impressive is that you all take your time and give of your talents to help those that need it. And that's what makes us a better community. And there's not enough thank yous in this world to say thank you to you all for what you do and the way that you participate in the lives of others. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and keep up the good work. Thank you. Once again, thank you all so much.
I'm not going to take too much time. I just wanted to really thank our council members and our mayor, and they should really be getting a round of applause as well for all their wonderful hard work that they do for our city and for encouraging us every single day to be the best employees that we can be. And I also, I have to say thank you to my wonderful boss and for Laura, who always encouraged and supported us every day as well, and to our families who support us at home also.
You know, this isn't really on the agenda, but I just want to say, since we've been in these council meetings, we've been doing this employee recognition part. I tell you, it has been so wonderful, I know for all of us, and I think for the citizens as well, to see what wonderful people we have working in our city and the jobs that they do that, I can tell you, I wouldn't have known what they did until I was presented this information. And it's overwhelmingly positive. And that's what we need to keep doing, is being overwhelmingly positive in our community because that's what drives us forward. So we'll keep that up, and I thank you all for bringing those forward to every council meeting. I look forward to the next one. Okay, we're to citizen comment. I only have one speaker card. I'm Ms. Victoria Chadwick.
Good evening. My name is Victoria Chadwick, and today I represent the Boys and Girls Club, Gregg County Life Skills Project. On the Longview Transit Ride, it was something that I wasn't familiar with and that I didn't think was important at first. It was very experiencing just learning how to get on the different routes. It was fun. It taught me a lot, such as getting off, having to pull the string to let the driver know your stop is coming up. It turned out to be fun and helpful. If I ever needed to go somewhere, I would know how to get to my destination on the Longview Transit. And the girls had to get to the Longview Mall on the Longview Transit, and the boys had to go to the Spring Hill Walmart. It was a challenge. And we all had a good time, and it was fun and very experiencing. And that's it.
Thank you so much. Ms. Noddy, I know you had a large part in this, and getting this together for the Boys and Girls Clubs, and it's a, it's a great thing for them to do and to experience in our community. Go ahead, don't be bashful.
I won't, I won't. Good evening, everyone. Actually, the Boys and Girls Club are a phenomenal organization. I've had the opportunity of working with Joyce, who is a classmate of mine, and Bea Ann. They do tremendous things in life skills training for the youth that participate there. They're just not going there to have fun, although there are some very awesome table tennis players there. I've had some challenges. But just hats off, great applause, keep up the good work. Victoria, great job in your presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Noddy. Okay, we're to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda the council would like to be pulled off for separate discussion?
May I approve?
Move in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Consent agenda passes. Okay, now we're to action items. We're considering a resolution to appoint a mayor pro tem for the upcoming year. Now, it's my understanding that this year, the mayor pro tem will, I would like to nominate Ms. Ishihara. It appears it is your time to do this. And I think you'll be a wonderful mayor pro tem because I know you're always present at everything I'm at, which is a lot. And so that means you're present at things that I'm not at, which is even better. So I would like to make that, that motion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. We're consider a resolution authorizing an agreement between Abbey Developers and the City of Longview settling and releasing claims relating to the February 7, 2012 Development Participation Contract for the construction of Hawkins Parkway East 259 relating improvements. Mr. Bonds?
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, as the mayor said, we did enter an agreement with Abbey Development in February 2012 for the extension of Hawkins Parkway. There's a short picture of it there. As the basis of the agreement required the city to pay for one-third the cost of the extension of the street. That represented a third lane of a roadway that was only required to be two lanes by the developer. We also agreed to pay for the sidewalk, which he wasn't required to construct. Now, there was a preliminary cost estimate done at the time the agreement was entered that estimated the cost for the city would be $565,000. The contractor was then to submit documentation showing that those were the exact cost. However, at the time he requested the reimbursement, it was very difficult to determine the exact alatable cost that the city was to participate in. So we have worked with Abbey Development. We have come to this settlement agreement where the city will make four installment payments that will total $500,000 instead of the $565, and be $162,500 this fiscal year, and $112,500 for the next three fiscal years. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about that.
No discussion, council?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Bonds.
Sure.
We have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now, we're to the budget item. Mr. Willard, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, and city council. It's my pleasure tonight to present for your consideration a proposed budget for the City of Longview for 2015 and 2016 fiscal year. The document you have before you is the culmination of a process that began in May and will end when the council adopts the final version of this budget, beginning in September. As we go forward from tonight, there will be plenty of opportunities for discussion and public input. The city staff will be more than happy to answer any questions you might have, as well as providing you with any other necessary information to help you make informed decisions. In preparation for this year's budget, we began with the expectation of a very small amount of growth in our revenues. Since 2011, the property values have grown only an average of 1.2 percent. This moderate growth has also been tempered by lower-than-expected sales tax revenues, resulting in only a few thousand dollars of new funding available for FY 2015 and 2016 budget. Even so, this proposed budget contains new expenditures, namely the startup and operations of our new animal shelter, which is now under construction, the police pay initiative, and several projects from the recently adopted comprehensive plan. In order to fund these very important initiatives, as well as maintaining our current level of operations and services, I am proposing the use of fund-balanced reserves to close the gap between our revenues and our expenses. We all understand that using revenue, or reserves, to balance a budget is not sustainable year after year. However, in this year, of no growth and increased spending levels, I believe it is an appropriate use of funds. It is also important to note that even with the use of these reserves, we will still maintain an adequate fund balance of 12.51 percent for our general fund. In preparing this proposed budget, we have kept the following goals in mind: let us budget conservatively, remain fiscally responsible, reduce costs throughout the budget when possible, and to continue to provide our citizens with quality services. I really want to thank this year as every year, but especially this year, our directors and department heads and staff for their work during this budget preparation. I especially want to thank and commend my budget team for all of their work. That includes Finance Director Angela Cohen, Assistant City Manager Keith Bonds, Director of Administration Mary Ann Miller, and Assistant to the City Manager Sean Hara. Without them, I certainly could not be here tonight and prepared to, to present this budget to you. So I really appreciate all that they've done and contributed. Before we get into the meat of the budget, I do want to spend just a minute to remind you and the public of the many great things that we have going right now that are being completed in this and some future years, some very exciting things that have been funded, and some of them we are completing as we go, go forward. One of the projects that is really, you know, coming to completion is the Developer Participation Project on the Fourth Street Extension. And of course, that extends Fourth Street from Hawkins Parkway over to 259. And we've had some delays in weather, like most construction projects, but the revised completion date is around November 2015. And we think this is just a wonderful project that's going to open up development. And once again, this is where the city participated with the developer to widen the roadway that would necessarily be more constricted. We'll have a street light there at Hawkins and Fourth Street, and, and this is, I think, a marvelous project that's moving along and something that will pay big dividends for the city in the future. Also, George Ritchie Road construction. Last year, we set aside $1 million out of cash reserves, and, and we are just about finished with all our expenditures on the right-of-way. This map's a little bit difficult to see, but within the next year or so... What's the completion date on George Ritchie? The full deal will be? I think in 2017, we'll be driving all the way across George Ritchie. Here's a picture of, of kind of what it looks like now. And this, of course, I think many years to come will be a great area for Longview to develop, and essentially, it'll be sort of an outer loop in some respects. Also, in 2011, the citizens approved the street bond project, $52 million worth of projects, and we are moving along at a good pace on those. You'll see many of them completed, work in summer under construction. Magnolia is currently under construction. Many of the downtown projects that we've worked on have been completed. We're still the downtown on Center Street in the design, and then we'll be bidding that upon completion. So a lot of these projects have been completed, and I believe the Cotton Street project is right now in the final design and negotiating final right-of-way issues there. So those are proceeding along very nicely. Here are a few pictures of some of these projects that I think we can all, and the citizens, can be proud of that enhance our city and upgrade our infrastructures as we go along. Magnolia Lane, of course, is a lot of traffic that goes through there, and with that widening, I think will, will really be a nice thing. Fenton Road. And those are just some of the things that are ongoing, that, that we are either completed. A lot of them are nearly completed. All right, on the, on the budget, I'd like to start really with some budget assumptions that every year that we start our budget with, and the first thing we look at is what do we feel like our revenue is going to be for the budget? And I'm going to talk mainly about the general fund mostly tonight, but we look at all of our revenue streams from the different funds, and we, we try to estimate trends and what we think the economy is going to do and what we think will happen in the future. And the first thing in this budget, we did have some increased property values. Gregg County Appraisal District, those values came in a little bit above what we got last year, which we were thankful for. Harrison County's property values were up just a little bit as well. But that has been offset by falling sales tax numbers. And so where we've ended up is basically a very small amount of new revenue for '15 and '16. The other thing that's important to know, that this budget does not have any property tax rate increase in it. We are holding that the same as last year. We are not going to propose a water or sewer rate increase. We talked a little bit about that before in the budget workshop. And although we're not going to propose a rate increase, I do, when we get to that part of the presentation, want to spend a little time about our water and sewer fund and some of the things that I think were lost in the discussion a little bit at the, the council work session that I'd like just to emphasize for you all tonight. We all are proposing a rate increase for our sanitation services of a dollar a month, and we'll discuss that also. This budget reflects reorganization of some of the departments. Of course, the most familiar is the Parks and Recreation Department. We have, or Community Services, and peeled out Parks and Recreation out of that to emphasize those things. We've also put a 3 percent employee pay raise in this budget. And we've included a police pay initiative, and we'll have more to say about that. Also, animal shelter operations. We're contemplating opening in April or May of 2016, which we need to plan for about six months of operations thereabouts for the new animal shelter. And then we have some comprehensive plan projects. That's another thing that was obviously finished last year with a lot of citizen input and those things. And we want to continue the work on that and try to address those things as we can each budget year. And then, of course, we're going to propose the use of fund-balanced reserves to close the funding gap that we have this year. So beginning with our revenues on property tax values, this is a graph that shows historically, since 2009, the property tax values. And this is so important because a good deal of our revenue comes from property taxes. And as you can see, since 2009, we, we've had some modest growth. But in the last two or three years, it's just been a very slow growth, and we've not lost a lot, which we're thankful for that. But we just haven't had the big growth that, that we would like to have. And of course, the emphasis on development is directly related to that. And each new house that's built, each new development that comes in, restaurant, whatever, adds to that number every year of values that, that increase. So if we can increase those values every year and keep our tax rate the same, then I think we're, we're doing a good job in that respect. These are the, the revenues that the current tax rate will generate, 28,244 into the general fund. And sales tax revenue, this is the same, a graphical history of what we expect. And of course, we expect to receive less revenue next year than, than this year. This chart's very important. It shows our tax rates. And, and of course, you can get lost, I think, and many of the citizens, you know, it's a little difficult to explain. We basically have two tax rates that make up our total rate. And down at the bottom, it's our maintenance and operations. That's our, our, what it takes to operate the city. And then our debt rate portion. And that is fixed based on our general obligation bonds. For instance, the $52 million street bond issue that was approved by the voters, we have to, you know, pay debt service on those bonds. So that piece of the rate is calculated to pay the debt service every year. So I think it's a good story to show that, you know, for the last two years, or three, or two years, we have not changed the rate. And the only reason before that we did was due to the, the bond payments that we had coming due that were voter-approved. So for maintenance and operations at least, I think the city's done a really good job at managing, managing their funds. And it is important to us to keep that tax rate low and to keep it where we don't have to raise taxes. And that's, that's what, what we strive to do. This is a pie chart that, that breaks out the general fund revenue and sources that we're expecting this year. And you can see that sales tax and property tax make up nearly 70 percent of our revenue stream. So when sales tax starts to fall, then that, that's not a good thing for us. But we watch it very closely, and, and throughout the year, depending on what we're seeing come in, we make adjustments in our, our budgeting, you know, for that. Our expenditures, of course, are greater. You'll notice the total is greater than the expected revenue. And you see there in our general fund that 60, what, 2 percent of the general fund money goes to public safety, either fire or police. And of course, public safety, streets, parks, those are core services that the city is expected to, to provide for the citizens. So fund balance appropriations. You notice the difference between the expected revenues and the expected expenses for the general fund. There is a budget gap of 1.8 million, 887,293 dollars that we have more expenses than projected revenue. And basically, that is made up of three areas. First, our police pay initiative. We have built in a 3 percent raise that was in the budget and in order to meet the objectives of the pay structure for the police department. That will cost another $761,000. Animal shelter operation and startup, and we'll have more detail about this in the presentation. But we figured net new required spending for six months of the animal shelter operation, and that's netted out against expected revenue. And we have a little bit of one-time cost for startup in that. And that new number is 776,189. And then comprehensive plan projects, that we'll detail for you. That would be another $350,000 that we would like to spend to accomplish those projects. Now, just to talk a little bit about what we'd like to fund with the fund balance, the Longview Police-Tyler structure. It's, it's no secret, and Mayor Mack rightfully pointed this out at the last meeting and, and during the recent election, that there is a difference, it seems, between the Tyler Police Department and the Longview Police Department in the respect of being fully staffed. We have 172 sworn positions in the City of Longview. And for whatever reasons, our turnover rate for the year 2014 was 10.8 percent in our police department. Currently, we're about 6.5 percent. And it seems that Tyler does not have the turnover rate or the retention loss that we seem to have in our, our police department. And when you look at it, it could have some... And when you look at it, it could have something to do with the pay structure, and so this is an effort to close that gap and to give our police department the chance to operate fully staffed. Chief Dingler and Chief Bishop will tell you, I think, that the 172 sworn positions allows them enough officers to do what they feel like they need to do. Problem is, we don't ever get to be full strength, and this is an effort to address that and to close that gap and allow our police department to be at full strength. We, several years ago, at least eight or 10 years ago, City Council authorized, I think it was 15 new positions in the police department to be filled over two or three years, which got them up to the 172 number. And I don't know exactly, but I think maybe one time in the last seven or eight years have we ever hit that full strength, and not for very long. And it seems like we have difficulty retaining our seasoned officers, and so this is an effort to do that. Animal shelter, to talk a little bit about this, there are some things, if we want to be open in April or May of next year, there are some things that we need to provide for. The first one is a full year of a manager's salary, and we believe that, and we are in the final stages of interviews for an animal shelter manager, and we'll have hopefully an announcement soon about that position, but we feel it's very important to have that person ready to go and here in Longview before we start, open the door on the facility, because there is so much to do with ordinances, staffing, policies, operations that contracts with other cities, and we just feel like we have to be ready. When those doors are ready to open, we have to be ready to step in and operate it. So this budget includes a full year for a manager's salary. We've included eight months of two supervisor salaries and six months of shelter operations, which would include, at this point, 13 full-time positions, including a veterinarian, four part-time positions, and then we've also figured conservative revenue projections that are going to come mainly from contracts with other cities. We'll obviously want to depend on donations if we can get that part up and running as well, and other adoption fees and those type of things. As I said, the estimated completion date's in April of 2016. So I wanted to show you the net new expenditure, if I could, of the animal shelter. There are certain things we're already doing in that that are not new costs but are going to be incorporated. The expenditures for six months plus startup would be a total of $1,274,871. We're projecting six months of revenue at $144,186, so the net cost is $1,136,85. Now, we want to peel out of there, those are existing animal control officers that we are going to fold into that department, but we're already paying for that in our budget, as well as animal shelter costs with the Humane Society that we're currently paying for as well. So that's where we get a net new expenditure for this year of our six months of operations for the $776. Now, in that number also includes $180,895, that'll be one-time costs that are not in the construction, and that's going to be like desks, chairs, FF and E-type costs to open the shelter. So that's what we're contemplating in this budget. Now, comprehensive plan things that we'd like to talk about as well, these are the things that we're trying to address in the budget. The first one is the Small Area Plan for Interstate 20. Now, this is directly out of one of the 29 different objectives that came out of the comprehensive plan, and that was the need to do a really detailed look at the I-20 corridor and what direction do we need to go to fully utilize and develop what we have on Interstate 20. And we plan to fund that study. We have a tax increment reinvestment zone fund that has a balance in there that we would like to use, and then LeadCo has offered to partner with us and pay half of those costs for that project. Also, and here's a Small Area Plan for Downtown. It's the same concept. You know, we've spent a lot of money on our downtown, and I think we have a wonderful downtown footprint, and we're making a lot of progress there, but this really takes a smaller look as well, and do we want entertainment venues or zones down there? Do we want different historical areas? Or what do we want to do with our downtown? And what do we want to try to recruit to make downtown what we all want it to be? LeadCo has also agreed to partner that with us as well. The Unified Development Code, I think this is very important. This is also part of the comprehensive plan, and we all know, and as the slide on the property taxes and the sales taxes indicates, we have to have and depend on more and more and greater development in the city of Longview, because that directly impacts 60% of our general fund budget. And the more we can do, the better that we can get at bringing it in here, the better off we'll be. A Unified Development Code deals with our Development Services Department, and right now, if you can imagine when a developer or a builder comes into Longview, there are multiple codes that you have to look at to determine what we require in the city of Longview. And Unified Development Code simply brings every code that we deal with into one book, if you will, and so theoretically, you can look at that and know, depending on what you want to do in Longview, you'll know exactly what the requirements are for that, and it makes it a lot easier, I think, for people that want to do business here to have one code book that they can go to to determine all that. So we think that's very important to get us on continuing our goal and pursuit of being developer-friendly and making it smooth. LeadCo, once again, has also offered to partner in that with us. And then there's a Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan, our MPO, which is our Metropolitan Planning Organization, which utilizes state TxDOT funds as well as local funds, and that is managed, Karen Owen, our city employee, manages the MPO for us, and they have funds and have approved Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan in their upcoming budget as well. And then a Matching Grant for the Green, and I don't know exactly how much you all know about the Green project, Keep Longview Beautiful. Kim Droge is leading that effort, and several months ago, last year, she came to the city and the city agreed to pursue and be for matching funds. She's made an application to the TxDOT or the State Parks and Wildlife Department for an $800,000 grant to begin work on the Green, and it's a nine-acre tract that the city purchased several years ago, old floodplain property that is right on the entrance to Downtown on 31 and the spur. And the project eventually will tie in the Arboretum area and include several really nice things as our entranceway coming into Longview. She'll know, I think, in mid-August about whether we're successful at that, but we've budgeted, and I think LeadCo as well, has budgeted money for that matching grant, so we wish her a lot of good luck on that. We've also, this is not directly in the comprehensive plan, but I think it flows out of the idea that we want, and the citizens want, more emphasis and focus on our parks, our recreation, and so our efforts with our new Parks Director and those programs are also part of that. And then there'll be money in here for the Arboretum. The Arboretum is an area that the city owns, but there is a 501(c)(3) group who manages the, I don't know what they're exactly called, but they are in charge of developing the Arboretum. They have a master plan, and this is an effort to participate with that 501(c)(3) group to do some clearing efforts and some land management there on that Arboretum property. It's just adjacent to Maude Cobb, and I think eventually with trails and other things would really connect with the Green and be a very nice project long-term. So the way, you noticed, $350,000 is what we were asking to address those projects. The Unified Development Code, we're estimating that will be $120,000 to complete that project, and this would be the city's portion of that part of it. The Small Area Plan, our part $50,000. The Arboretum Development Assistance, we'd like to commit $50,000 to that project. Our matching portion on the grant from Texas Parks and Wildlife would be $100,000. And then various parks projects that we need to do, we need to build a fence at Lear Park around, at the soccer field, and then that includes some playground equipment, I think, at Aiken Park, if I'm not mistaken, where that's contemplated to go in. And of course, the Green, we don't want to think about not being successful in our grant, but if that were the case, then that obviously would not be spent and turned back into the general fund. So here's really the bottom line for the general fund. It shows our beginning fund balance that we anticipate having October the 1st of this year. Our revenues, $64 million. Those are our expenditures, and that would leave a fund balance of $9,824,548, if you allow us to use, to close the gap that we have, the fund gap with fund balance. Now, out of that number also, we were, out of the final fund balance, we reserve $1,500,500 earmarked out of that number reserved for OPEB. Now, that's an acronym for Other Post-Employment Benefits, and that includes future healthcare commitments that we have, that auditors, that we try to set aside that to mitigate any long-term liabilities on our books that we have. So that's taken out of there, and we will still have a fund balance of $8,324,548, which is 12.5% fund balance, and of course, our council requirement has been 10%, so we would still have a nice cushion above that 10%. And I think that is a very important point to really focus on is, you know, in using that fund balance, we are still going to have a real healthy reserve that we're, I think, comfortable with presenting to you tonight. So are there any questions? Let's go back to that one, Sean. Are there any questions on the general fund things?
I have one about, last year we've reserved half a million for the shelter projected operating. Did we just?
That went back into the general?
That's just back in there, so you've not, okay.
Yeah, that went back.
And I would be interested, and I can get with you and Keith later, but I'd be interested in seeing the breakdown more of the shelter budget. We got that last year, and I'd just be interested in seeing that more. The other question was, it looks like from the original presentation, we'd cut the facility space plan out of there. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
That's correct, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
On the comprehensive plan items, that $50,000, which would be our portion, I noticed on the bottom slide where it has the appropriations part, it only says small downtown. Does that include I-20 as well? Because if I'm correct, both of those small area plans were approximately $100,000 in total.
Yes, the I-20 will be funded out of, the I-20 will be funded out of the TERs reserve and not general fund.
And that's another question I have. Exactly how much is in the TERs?
$90,000?
Around $85,000.
$85,000.
And a follow-up question to that. I know we had some issues with the TERs, so is that up and running, ready to go, been approved by the state? Where are we in that process?
It is not. We, it's still, the TERs zone is still there, and when we were, a couple of years ago, looking at that, we have some errors in the zone when it was laid out due to property lines and property lines that it does not follow correctly. So there are some issues with that that we need to get cleaned up, and we're eventually, I think, will need to redo the TERs zone and undo that one and then start another one and do a better job on surveying, getting those boundaries the way we want them, but...
Because we've been talking about redrawing those lines now for over a year, and so I'm curious to know, which department are you going to do that? Are you going to take care of that at the city manager level? Or is that going to be department-driven? Because in order for us to be effective, we're going to have to have it up and going. So I'm just kind of curious, what is the plan?
Yeah, no, I think we're going to need to have some legal assistance and a consultant to come in to help us redraw that, and there's a legal procedure to dismantle that entity, the TERs fund, and then we'll have to redraw the lines, and it'll be a large project to get that done, and we don't have a price on what it would take to do that, but we need, obviously need to do that, and it's, but it's not contemplated here. We can certainly add that if you all would like to or in addition.
Well, the only reason I'm asking is because if we're going to do the plan, it's kind of like, it wouldn't benefit us if we didn't have the lines drawn so that we could have that revenue coming in as well to support any future projects along Interstate 20, because some of that area is hugely impacted, so that's why I'm asking.
Exactly.
Thank you. I'd ask that y'all would look at that, please.
Okay, sure will.
Just an observation. And I'm tickled that the fund balance is going to end at 12.5%, but I just want to point out that of the $1,887 that we're drawing down on the fund balance, almost a million four of it is operating recurring costs that come '16-'17, we're going to have to find some revenue for.
Exactly, yes, sir.
So I just wanted to point that out. Thanks.
Okay.
Mr. Willard?
Yes, sir.
Maybe I'm not reading this correctly, I may not understand the slide, but are you telling me that the expenditure to run the animal shelter for six months is $1.274 million?
Yes, sir. That's our estimate.
So for a full year, we're looking at $2.4 million to run this animal shelter?
No, the $1.2 million includes money that we're already spending in our budget for animal control officers and...
But that's for the full year?
Well...
Not just for six months? You're taking the full year out of the six-month budget, aren't you? Are you taking just six months out of the six-month budget?
The six months. Let's go back to that other, that slide. The net new expenditures are the $776, and if you subtract the one-time costs out of that, then that gets it to, what, $600?
$600,000.
So that's really the net new cost for the half-year. So if you, for a full year, it's going to be $1.2 million for a full year of operations costs, once you, am I saying that right?
The ACOs are your first quarter.
Huh?
The ACOs are your first quarter.
Yeah, yeah. So we've all along predicted about $1.2 million a year to operate the shelter.
$1.2 new funds. New funds, because we're already spending $500,000, basically. So you're saying $1.7 basically to operate the shelter every year?
No, I don't think that's...
Yeah, I think here, when you're saying $1.2, I think you're forgetting to subtract out the Humane Society contract and the ACOs, or am I wrong?
That's what this slide shows, that we're subtracting out the ACO and the Humane contract. This is trying to show how much net new money this year that is required to...
I'm just trying to figure out how much money it takes to run it. I don't care about the net. Give me a number.
About $1.2 million a year, is that right? Increased.
No, no. I don't, what I'm asking is, give me a number that it takes to run the animal shelter every year. I don't care how much we've put back or how much the revenues are coming in. If I want to go to a store and buy something, it's costing me $2, I want to know, I want the number that it's going to cost to operate the animal shelter every year. I'm asking where it's coming from.
Can we get it, Dave?
Okay.
Does this include a full year of manager's salary, paid line, so that it, what, the better go?
Okay. We'll get you a hard number, but my remembrance is it's about $1.2 million a year.
New money.
Yes, to operate the animal shelter.
But that's not taking into account what we're paying, the $3.54 of the animal, the Humane Society and all those... Humane Society and all those things, correct? That's what Keith is saying.
It does take that into consideration.
But it could be 2.2 million if you get everything together, but we have all these other revenues.
Okay, but, but my point is, is you're saying about 2.2 million to run the animal shelter, and then we start subtracting out the things that we make off of it and the things that we have going on and the things that we have budgeted. So, you're saying about 2.2 million per year. Thank you.
We'll try to get you an exact number.
Thank you, sir.
At the next, make sure we're all apples to apples. Okay, if I might move on, anybody have any other questions yet?
I do.
Yes, ma'am.
That revenue portion, it doesn't include what is projected to come from other communities that may be partnering, correct? It does? Okay. Okay. What are those numbers? Is there a flat rate?
We haven't determined it exactly, because we're about 80, is it 87 or 88? This is based on what the Humane Society is currently charging.
And I know this is new. I was just curious.
And once we get into it, it may be, it may cost us more than, and, but we'll have to charge per animal what it's costing us to, you know, to actually run the thing.
Which is another question, because our costs are going to be greater than the Humane Society. We've got a brand-new building. So, if ours costs more, why are people going to contract with us and not the Humane Society who costs less?
My understanding, the Humane Society's not going to be in that business of taking animals.
Yeah. Or that's my understanding. I mean, that's how we got in the business of constructing a new shelter, that they gave us notice that they were not going to do that.
Right.
Can we get that in writing?
It is in writing, from a couple of years ago, anyway.
Well, I mean, all along, they've wanted out of that intake business, and so I don't contemplate, they've told, and I don't know that I have anything in writing necessarily, but.
They sent a letter.
I mean, they wanted to get out of it, and that's kind of how it all started. But I don't think they want, and they donated the land to build the, you know, the shelter, so I don't think there's any desire on their part.
I do think seeing, because I know Keith has a really nice spreadsheet that shows like kind of what we're talking about. I think that would be really helpful, because it has the overall cost, but then minus what the 370 we're paying.
We'll try to get you a better deal. My purpose tonight.
There's still of us on here that don't know the first thing about this animal shelter, because we weren't involved in the, how many years it took to do this and all the planning and all the things that took place. And so, I need a better grip on that.
No, I understand. Our, we'll try to, we'll get you a better deal. This was an attempt to just demonstrate how much new money we needed for six months of operations, when you peel out some of the one-time costs and those things. So, we'll get, and it's confusing to be doing six months versus the 12-month thing. Make sure we've got all, everything properly calculated. So, we'll, we'll come back or send that out to you and have more discussion about that at the next meeting.
But Mr. Moore's point is, needs to be very, very well taken here in the fact that not this year's budget, because we can cover it with our fund balance.
Right.
Next year's budget will have recurring operating expenses, and they'll be a full year, not six months.
Exactly right.
The police won't matter. We're budgeting a full year for the police. But we're going to have to budget twice as much next year for this animal shelter, correct?
Yes.
So, those are things that we must really be cautious about, because we can't dip in fund balance every year. We'll have no fund balance left.
No, and I 100% agree. And in my opening remarks, I really wanted to emphasize that, that, and not have any false illusions or anything, that we, we can do it this year and cover our obligations. And hopefully, the economy will see some recovery there. But we, we can't sustain out of our fund balance, there's no way. And so, that need, that's exactly right. We, if we, the economy doesn't come back to the levels, you know, to help us sustain these new obligations, then, you know, we've got some issues there.
And I want citizens to understand, if you can't take it out of fund balance, there's only one other place it comes from, raising taxes. I mean, there's no other option. And that's not the intention of me or this council, I don't think in any stretch of the imagination. So, we need to be very cautious as how we proceed forward, taking care of things that are, that are necessities, obviously. But enough said. Thank you, sir.
Yeah. We'll get you a more clear picture of what we expect. Wastewater, we are not obviously going to go forward with that, but I wanted to visit a little bit about the water and wastewater and how that work. Water and wastewater is a separate fund from general fund. And of course, taxes and fees and those things, those are more general fund. And we set our water rates to our customers based on a cost of service to provide the water. And in the discussion at the, at the preliminary workshop when we first kind of started the budget process, I did not do a very good job, I don't think, of kind of bringing that forward. And we had looked at a possible rate increase, and of course, that does concern people. It concerns all of us. And I wanted to make sure that, that people understood that, you know, we've heard some things, and my phone rang a lot during that time, y'alls might have as well, about, well, why is the city just, you know, willy-nilly jacking up the water rate? Or we, you know, lost funds from the, all the rain we've had and things like that. And I just want to assure you all and the public that we, as a city, do not just, you know, take lightly any kind of increase and the impact that might have on people. Most of our city employees are rate payers and pay water bills. And that, and, and I wanted just to show that what goes in to providing and the amount of money it takes to provide the kind of water and sewer service that we have in Longview. So, first of all, we have one water treatment plant. It's called the Grace Creek Water Treatment Plant, capable of treating 21 million gallons a day of wastewater. And on this facility, and you can see an aerial of that, if we were to replace that new today, it'd be 66 million dollars. And over the years, we have to spend money on that facility to keep it up and keep it running. And these projects are very expensive. And I'm really proud, and several years ago, we started moving in a direction to try to put aside cash reserves to help pay for some of these projects instead of having to use revenue bonds so much. And we, because of that, we just completed a $6 million project at that wastewater treatment plant, and we paid cash for that, which I think is a wonderful way to do that. And, and these projects, though, are built into the water rates. The ability that we had to set aside that money to pay that cash, that's part of the water rates, and we have to set those. And we try to do that in looking ahead and priority with, you know, and these projects and these water and wastewater plants are so expensive that, but we have to do that along in order to provide the quality of service that we have in that area. Water treatment plants, we have three of those. We have our Cherokee Water Treatment Plant, capable of reducing 26 million gallons of water a day, and to replace that'd be 97 million dollars. So, we have a lot of fixed assets out there. This is the Sabine Water Plant, the same thing. And we also have the Lake of the Pines Water Treatment Plant. So, we have hundreds of millions of dollars of fixed assets that, that the city and, and the Water and Wastewater Utility, our employees are responsible to keep upgrades and make sure those are where they need to be. And our water rates and our sewer rates are set, you know, many times to contemplate having to look forward and knowing that we need to spend that money to keep those up to date. We have seven elevated storage tanks. We have 680 miles of water system and pipelines in the city of Longview that our men and women of our water and street department have to keep up and keep going. And that's funded out of our water and wastewater rates. We have 650 miles of wastewater system and pipelines, and we have 129 people that are paid out of the water utility fund. Many of them work in the plants 24/7, seven days a week, holidays, to provide the water and the quality that we have, that when we turn on that tap, it comes out. So, I just wanted, even though we're not, we're going to go ahead and absorb that this year, but I wanted to let the public know that, that we don't just sit up here and try to find ways to raise the water rate or the sewer rate or just because we had a, you know, a wet summer. These are just comparisons that I'd like just to show you. And these populations, different things, but the bills, there's, there's many ways to, you know, to present a bill. But if you get apples to apples and all compared is for 5,000 gallons of water and 10,000 gallons of water purchased, and there's different minimums and different things like that. But if you live in, in the Tri-Road Special Utility District, and you want to buy 10,000 gallons of water, then you're going to pay $70.60 equivalent for that 10,000 gallons. If you're in the city of Longview, you're going to pay $30.75. And this is without the, any rate increase in there. Others that you can see, our sister City Tyler, their rate for 10,000 gallons is 34.77. So, the exercise in this is to, I think, I hopefully demonstrate that, number one, we take seriously if we come to you and the citizen for a rate increase. And even if it's $5 a month, that's a big deal for people, and we understand that, and we, we don't take that lightly. And we feel like that, that the product we produce out there is a good value for our And, and I won't spend much time here, but basically, these are, in 2005, historically, we would raise the rate, and then we would not raise the rate for two or three years. And then all of a sudden, you see the spike in 2011. We had to raise it 26.8% on the water rates and 6.7% on that. And in that year, we kind of said, look, let's, instead of, you know, let's raise, try to get rid of the big spikes as we go along. And if we can raise it a small amount, a little bit along, that's better than the big spikes. That was kind of what we were trying to operate on. And I think the last few years, we've been able to demonstrate that. And so, for 2016, we're not going to propose the increase. So, the result of that, here's, you know, I think there was a question that came out in a letter to the editor or an editorial or something about can the city, can you absorb, look at absorbing that this year and not raising the rate? And the answer is yes, we can, and that's what we're proposing to do. But it does have some impact. And you can see it, the total revenue without the rate increase would, that's what we're expecting, the expenses. And then a real key to think about is the CIP reserve. That's where we're going to absorb what we're doing and not transfer as much over into the CIP, which normally, that's a higher number than, than what we have. And then our fund balance will still be above the minimum, the 15%. Okay? And then this is a slide, we don't, Mr. Moore can probably talk an hour about debt service and revenue bonds a lot more eloquently than I could. But basically, we have to maintain debt coverage ratios for our bond covenants when we, we have revenue bonds. And this debt service number is important to see. We have revenue bonds that, that we've had for many years, and when we build a plan or do those things, we issue revenue bonds that are paid for out of the water rates. Not like the general bonds for the street bond, you pay that out of, out of tax rate. This is out of the water rates that, that all of our citizens pay. And currently, every year, we have to build into our rate structure 7,672,000 dollars of debt service to pay our debt on revenue bonds. And so, our goal has been if we can reduce the need to go out for those bonds, we can reduce the, the need for the debt service. But, so built into these rates are also not only revenue or expenses to operate, but we have to build in the debt service as well on that. So, anyway, that's a picture of the, of the water and wastewater system. Any questions on that? And we'll try to, I know we're getting long-winded here, so we'll try to march through.
One thing, David.
Mr. Willard? So, our debt service is 7.6 million. And then we're also in there, there's money for a fund so that we're not having to spend all the money on bonds also? So, do you know what our total is that we're between those two? Well, we just spent, finished $6 million on a project. I don't know, what, what's the balance in CIP? Do we know, Angela?
I think it's 6 million. I think it's around five. The previously authorized project has been part of the CIP program right now, so probably around five million.
It's about a $5 million CIP reserve now. Okay. Okay. Yes?
Question, maybe, for? For Angela. How come we don't net out OPEB set aside in water and sewer like we do in general fund?
We could do that. We actually book the OPEB into the water reserve by GASB rules at this point, so we don't net that out. The general fund, we set that aside because we don't book that as of yet.
I have a speech on water and sewer rates, Mayor, but I'm, I'm going to hold it till we have the meeting on August 13th that, that we talk about rates.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm, I'm sure everybody would appreciate that. It's a short speech, a short.
Mayor Prochem, Ishihara will be in charge of that one.
Okay, let's move to sanitation rates. As we talked about earlier, our sanitation, a little bit of background on sanitation. You know, two or three year, two years ago, we started talking about the need to move more into recycling and more automated systems than we had, and we had a desire to focus on recycling. Part of that was in an effort to prolong the life of the landfill. Obviously, the more recyclables we can dispose of in another way, that saves landfill. We wanted to improve, you know, the environment and costs through alternative fuels for that program. And we wanted to implement an automated collection program. In 2013, we came to the council and asked for a dollar rate increase to the sanitation fund. And at that time, it had been four years since there had been a rate increase in the sanitation fund when we came to council at that time. So, we told the council that we could defer that dollar rate if we would move toward more of an automated system. And we proceeded and did that, and we've gone two years by deferring that, that $1. So, we accomplished what we told the council we thought we could do. In fact, we've, it's been, been two years. So, we've gone six years in the sanitation fund without any rate increase to the base rate in our sanitation charge. And in that time, though, when we decided to move toward the automated system, we have increased recycling, participation's grown from 20 to 50%. We continue to collect the same type of items that we previous collected. We've continued to operate without a bag limit. And when we went into that system, that's what council wanted us to do, and that's what we recommended, that we eat, we not totally go to a system where we didn't pick anything up outside the cart. That's a very drastic, obviously, move for the citizens, and we felt like as a transition that it'd be best to, you know, to use the cart system and still continue to pick up the bags for citizens as well. In this system, we've reduced our employee injuries, because we've been reduced in some respects the, the labor costs. We began using alternative fuels. And so. We began using alternative fuels, and so in 2013 and 14, again, we delayed, delayed the need for the dollar increase. So I guess the takeaway here is, it's been six years since we have had a rate increase. And this is a slide I'd like to spend just a little time on to, to see, and, and these bars are made up of, of two pieces. The, the blue part is the rate, the, the monthly rate for our sanitation services. And you'll see, several years ago, we began to break out the fuel portion of that. Before that, we would just budget our rates based on the amount of fuel cost we thought we would have either up or down for the particular year, and in that year, we decided to break that out and to bill the rate payer what the actual fuel costs were. And as you can see, as we went along, that increased because of the price of fuel, that portion did increase. However, our base rate, you see, for six years, has been 14.95. Now thankfully, the rate payer's got a little bit of relief when fuel prices began going down. In the last two years, we've been able to pass that savings, if you will, along to, to the customers. So the, the takeaway, I guess, again, is that, that the length of time that we've had between a, a rate increase, and as you can see in the water and sewer fund, it's a little bit more magnified there, but, but you've got, you know, you have to plan for these things, and, and I think we, we've done a pretty good job operating this long and changing our systems up without that dollar, but we're proposing that, that we institute that dollar to the rate in this upcoming year. Now, the automated system, our rollout was, was difficult because of the, the new way of, of doing things, and our people, we've actually been doing it a little bit less than a year now, and Dwayne Archer and, and his staff have done a great job getting the routes down. We had to make some changes in the routes to accommodate some things, and we, I think, have our routes and those things down, but this is some of the things that, that really have, have mixed an automated cart system with providing the service, and the rate, the 14.95, is subsidizing not only the, is subsidizing the extra things that we've been providing along to the citizens, and we can continue exactly providing those level of services. And I think with the dollar, we can continue providing that and, and still be efficient. Some of the things that we're, we need to have a discussion about, and, and, and we do have a proposal about, but this is, uh, these are yard waste that, that is a sample, and where the yard contractor, whoever, may not leave that in front of your house, but will go around the corner, or some other neighborhoods, or whatever, and those are the bags, and so we pick those up at no extra charge, along with everything else. This is a good example where someone will use, use the cart, but they'll also, a lot of people cut their own grass and do their own yard work, and this is an example of yard clippings, but people, that are outside the cart. And we want to continue serving the people, but, you know, there are a lot of citizens, a lot of cities that don't pick up things that are not in the cart. Here's another example that, that slows us down on our routes. You know, these are things that, that, that we pick up, if, if it can, if we can put it in the, the trash, the truck, we stop and, and we pick it up at no extra charge. This is another example that, that we regularly find in our, our routes. You know, bulky item pickups. Now, you know, we've all had experience in storms, or hailstorms, or the hurricanes and things like that, where the city's inundated, and we've asked people in those situations to, you know, get their limbs out to the curb, or whatever, and we, we pick those things up. We don't charge anything for that. And we, and then we have instances where that's really not at the curb, it's more out in the middle of the lot, and, and yet it costs money, and we, we pick it up as a service to our citizens as we go along. So here's kind of the broad stroke. Prior to and up to, you know, FY 13 and 14, before we went to the automated system, we had a very small amount going into the recycling part, and everything else went into the landfill. We operated with 12 trucks and 36 people. When we went to the automated system, we felt like we could reduce those numbers of trucks and personnel and still accomplish what we needed to. And we felt like we could make those increases with eight trucks and reduce down to 16 people. But in reality, what's happened is that, right now, we're operating with all the services we're providing, a mixture of automation and bags and what, and bulky item or other things. We're operating with 12 trucks and 28 people. And so we are, are pleased to continue that level of service for all those different things, but we have not been able to reduce the labor part down to a point that we, we thought we might be able to, or the number of trucks, because we're doing all the services. So irrespective of the, the automated service and that move, you know, we need, we need the dollar increase two years ago, and because of our services, irrespective of the automation part of it, we feel like we need that going forward. So this is just a synopsis where it's all kind of together. The top part is what we used to provide, the bottom part is what we, was our goal, but the, the reality, it takes this many people and this many trucks to, to do what we're doing, and I think it's going pretty well now. As far as our routes, we're getting things picked up, we're not having to work till midnight and pay the, a lot of the overtime that we had been doing. We have some, but Dwayne and his staff and Ronald McPhee have gotten the routes and everything running pretty smoothly, I think, along. Not that we're there yet 100%, but, but I think we're doing pretty well on, on that part of it. So if you allow us to raise the rate by a dollar, this is the same sort of slide, we'd generate that amount of revenue and expenses. That would give us a fund balance of 1.2 million. We'd like to purchase another automated side loader, basically to replace some of the older trucks now that we're continuing to have to use, and then that would still give us a, a nice fund balance above the 15%, which we feel like is, is a, a good fund balance. Now, just to finish this portion up, this is a, a collection of cities that, that offer the 95 gallon cart collection service that we do. And you'll see Longview there, and the check marks represent all the services we provide for that base rate. Now, we've put in here the dollar increase, and, you know, just please note that, that that 14.95 is our base rate, and if we have a dollar, that's 15.95, but this has the fuel added in it, so that's the effective rate. But we provide all of these services. We have unlimited bags pickup, we'll pick up one or 100. We have the, the recycling that, that they have, we have a compost site, and we also provide weekly bulky item pickup. We come pick everything up at no charge. And you'll see, most of those cities, they do not pick up anything outside the cart, basically, or they, or they're charged for it. Now, we're not proposing to go to all that, but this is just a demonstration of, of kind of the service that we provide. You'll see Tyler is a city close to us, and they do have two collections a week, and every, no, every other week, they pick up recycling, but Tyler does not, I mean, they have a bag, they don't pick up bags outside the cart unless they charge you. They charge you for compost, and then the bulky item, I think they provide, is it one a year, or two a year?
Two pickups.
They provide two pickups a year, and then beyond that, they charge. So I guess the point of this is that, for the services that we're providing in our solid waste area, we feel like that with the dollar increase, we're still very competitive in comparison to, to other cities, and then to our sister city as well, so. Oh, let me back up to Tyler, this is an important point, if I could. You'll see the asterisk on Tyler. This rate, Tyler also does a commercial pickup, and they subsidize, from their commercial pickup, they subsidize their residential pickup by $3 a month on the rate. So if, if you peeled out, you know, Tyler, they'd have to raise their residential rate more than above that, so that's an important point. We, we don't do commercial as a rule. Okay. So in summary, and I'm, I'm finished? Yes, sir?
Whoa, back to sanitation.
Okay.
I'm not near to with that. Okay, I have a lot of questions. Sorry. Why are our landfill costs so high comparatively to other areas?
Landfill cost?
What do we charge for landfill cost, man?
I don't know, I think we, we spend about $620,000 a year, but that's the contract that we have with Republic Services.
Okay, say someone wants to take something to our landfill, what does it cost them?
If they bring their water bill and prove that they're one of our customers, they get charged the same amount that we pay.
Which is?
Which is 20, about 23.50 a ton. Something like that, right in that area.
If someone wants to take their trailer to the landfill and dump it, what does it cost them? $23.50 a ton?
Yeah.
What's the 100, what's the $125 fee, I've been told?
Because they have a three-ton minimum, and so you end up getting close to that, but it's not, it's not $120.
Okay.
I've been out there, I've, I've spent about 50 bucks for my little trailer, yeah.
Okay. Those rates are, are through a, a contracted service?
Yes, sir.
Is it true that residents of White Oak get two free drops in our landfill per year?
I believe that Republic has that contract in White Oak, and so it was probably part of that contract that they negotiated with the city was to offer two free drop-offs at the landfill. But if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe White Oak has any kind of bulky item pickup. So you have to take the stuff there, where in Longview, we're going to come to your house and pick it up.
Okay. Okay. How, thank you, you're doing great.
Yeah.
And trust me. This is mainly informative for me, because I'm, I want to be more informed. And, and understand, I think the sanitation department, y'all are top-notch. I mean, I think the guys that work in that department, they give it their all, they're the most, every time I see them, they are as happy and as friendly as they can be, and I can't say that I would be the same if the roles were reversed, so I admire them, and I commend every single one of them. How much are we paying in overtime since this automated system took place?
When we first launched, the routing was so difficult that we were out there pretty late, and so we paid a lot of overtime. I think if we can, I think we paid that first six months, $25,000 in overtime. We have got that pretty much under control. I don't know, it's been, it's been months since we worked over 40 hours. We've really got that managed pretty well now.
Good. And, you know, I understand, having to buy another truck, I understand that. And I can tell you, I would have rather you budgeted eight and needed nine than bought 10 and needed eight. So I don't have a big problem with that, I think underestimating is not a bad thing in those situations. But with the automated system, in order for it to be effective and efficient, then it needs to be an automated system, correct?
Correct.
And when the guys get out of the trucks and have to pick things up, it no longer becomes automated, then it's a semi-automated system.
Right.
Correct? So we don't have an automated system, because we offer a lot of things, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, I'm not saying it's a good thing. But we need to clarify that we have a semi-automated system, because our guys are still having to get out of that truck. And I, I really think that we need to, we need to consider that situation, because if the citizens of Longview don't want a $1 increase in their sanitation, then put everything in your bins and roll to the curb, and then we shouldn't have to have any kind of an increase in the fee, because that's what it's supposed to do. But if we want to keep throwing things out there that don't fit in the bins and expect us to pick it up, then it requires a dollar increase, because that's not what the system was proposed to do. Am I correct?
Right, well.
Okay. Let's just say yes, thanks, I like being correct.
Yes, okay. Yes, exactly.
Perfect.
You're right on.
This is a yes or no. Okay. So what I'm trying to get to is this. I don't know what the percentages are of people that do not use the bins or the automated system versus those that do, but it's apparent that those that do are paying for those that don't.
Yes, sir.
That's the bottom line. And we're also paying for those that want to stick their couches out there and us pick it up free of charge, and all of their grass and clippings, whatever you want to call it, the hundreds of bags that we pick up free of charge. And if we want to continue to do that, that's fine, but the citizens of Longview have to understand, it's going to cost us a dollar. If we don't want to continue to do that, then we need to set a fee for bulky items, because I think most cities charge for bulky pickup. I mean, UPS doesn't come to my office and pick my packages up for free. They, they charge me to do that. And so if we're going to do that system, it's fine, as long as the citizens of Longview understand that the majority are paying for the minority. I've never put a couch on my curb. I've never come and taken stuff from my curb before that wasn't in a, in a bin, and that's okay. So we need to make an understanding that this is, this is the reason why, not we need to charge another dollar. We're charging another dollar because we're not really following the rules. We're not really following the system the way it was put in place, and if we want to continue that way, I'm all for it, but it's going to cost us a dollar. That's the cost of doing business in Longview. But if we don't want to pay that dollar, everybody get a bin, you can have a big one, you can have a small one, because I know the automated systems work with the small bins, we talked about that a few council meetings before. If people don't want to have the big 50, 95 gallon bin, get a small one, put it out there, the arms come out, put it in, no one gets out of the truck, no overtime, run like clockwork, no dollar increase. But that means everything goes in the bin, and if you put it outside the bin, guess what, it's going to stay at your curb forever, until you put it in your truck and you go to the landfill. Right?
Right.
Okay. That's the options that we have for the city of Longview. So citizens, this is on you. I don't want this on me, because I'm happy to put my stuff in, in a bin and roll it out to my curb, but I'm also happy to pay the dollar if you want to keep doing what you wanted, what we're doing now. But this isn't council-driven, this is citizen-driven, and we need to make very clear on that, because I don't want people to say you're raising taxes, because this is essentially a tax increase, because anytime you increase a service fee, that's money you're paying out of your pocket. So I just want to be real clear that this is where we sit, and we need to come to an understanding that we're either going to continue business as usual, but it's going to cost a dollar more to do it, or we're going to become a little more strict and say, everybody gets a bin, and you roll your stuff to the curb, and we do it that way. Okay? That's when you say okay.
That's it.
Okay. All right. I just need, I needed to say that, because it. Yes, please.
Yeah, no, I just, I wanted to echo, I think that was very well stated, Mayor Mack, and I think that's exactly what we need people to understand, that we instituted the system, and I as a consumer am very, very pleased with it, but it seems as though we're punishing those that are, are not using the system. So if we're going to do the automated system, let's do the automated system and make people comply with it. So as I understand, I think that you're telling me, we deferred the increase last time, so you need the $1 increase this time, but let's look at, like Mayor Mack is saying, can we charge for bulky item pickup? Can we change unlimited bags? I think those are the things we need to be talking about now, so that we're not penalizing those people that are embracing the system, that's a great system. So I think that was very well said, and those are exactly the things we need to be talking about. So thank you.
And I think you're correct, we, we need the dollar increase right now. But our plan was to come back 60 days, my team's already working on some options, so we can put that to council, and you guys can kind of take a look at that, and then of course, citizen-driven, and figure out where we want to go. What do we want, how do we want trash picked up in Longview?
Mayor, if you can add something to it, I, I would very much like staff to come back with, with two or three options like you're, you're talking about, you know, by the end of the year, just so we have some discussion points on bulky item, charging for more than five bags, or something like that. five bags or something like that, that possibly this, this dollar, six months from now, you know, we could reduce. I don't know, but we could.
Well, I agree. I think we need to be looking at solutions for the situations that are before us. I mean, can we go to bi-weekly recycling to save overhead? I mean, can that, you know, we need to be looking at things that will, that will keep us competitive, give us the services that we want, but I still think we need to really look at the fact that you have the majority paying for the minority, and I don't understand that system, because I think if it's a fair system, everyone should be the same. And so to me, I think we need some discussion on this, but I think you all need to come to us with some options, and the citizens of Longview need to understand that this is, this is, this is citizen-driven here, and we need to really be aware of that. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Thank you. No, sir, thank you.
Dwayne? I think, just to clarify, Ms. Ishihara talked about it, the dollar rate increase, we feel like we need because we've deferred that for six years, and just if tomorrow we had everybody with everything in a cart, I think we still need the dollar. Now, going forward, I think that dollar will carry us even, you know, if we don't do a lot of the changes, but if we do change it and restrict some of those things, then that's going to carry us a lot farther down the road before the next time. So our idea, and we'll do whatever y'all would like, our idea was to come back with some options on restriction, you know, bag limits and what that would save us. You know, do we charge, you know, give everybody one free a year, or do you charge every time you get called out for those type of pictures to pick those up? We can bring those options back to you, you know, at any time, so.
I would love some statistics on how much, how many times are we picking up bulky items, not from the one house, I'm saying across the community. I want to know. How many times do we pick up those hundreds of bags sitting out there? I think those are, that's information that we need to be able to process, what this system is really accomplishing and what it's not accomplishing. Because I don't have any idea about that, but someone does. I mean, we have, we have to have statistics on that. I would like to see it.
Can I have one too?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to see, because a constituent asked me for it, the numbers, we touted a lot that our recycling is going to save us money, because every, you know, ton we take there, we get whatever it is versus what we pay at the landfill. Can we kind of work that out when we report back, how those savings are being incorporated into what we're talking about?
Sure, sure will. One problem on that front is with, as I understand it, the Chinese market has dried up as far as buying recyclables and things, and so the price for the recyclable, they're, they're having a difficult time moving those recyclables. So I don't know, we'll get those figures for you.
But all the more we should know, because maybe recycling is not effective. Maybe it's, I mean, it's, it's green, and it's, it's good, but maybe from a city standpoint, it's, it's too expensive. We have to find those things out, and we just need to have that information.
Okay. We'll be back at the next meeting with more information on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there such a thing as a paper bag for yard waste that could go to the compost rather than the landfill?
Lots of cities use those.
Do we? Do we?
No.
Oh, okay. I didn't think so.
Probably years ago, but they were about 50 cents a bag. So that cost, I think, kind of kept people from using them.
But it's okay for us to take the time to pick their stuff up, but they don't want to spend 50 cents for the bag, we can take it to the, to the compost. That's, that, that doesn't work for me. I'm just, I'm just going to tell you right now. That doesn't work in Longview, it's not going to work in this city. That is not going to work.
The person that has one bag of garbage or whatever that, you know, is subsidizing all the services that we're providing.
Correct. We're paying $16 or $15 and 95 cents or whatever, and you have the opportunity to fill up two 95-gallon buckets. Anything over that is costing someone else some money. We need to look at that.
Right.
Do all those clippings go to the compost pile, or do they go out to the landfill?
Landfill.
Can't put that, those plastic bags in the compost.
Yeah. And, you know, that's true.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Any other questions? Or I think the final thing then was the schedule, and I might just take just a second on that. Our next scheduled meeting is August 13th, where we'll have, obviously, budget discussion, fee change discussions, and preliminary vote on the tax rate, and these are set by statute that we follow. And we can and be happy to meet any time for, if you want additional budget work sessions for things like that. Of course, the only thing we'll need is 72-hour notice provisions, but we're more than happy in between these meetings to schedule whatever you'd like for us to, or if you want us to meet with you individually to talk about things, we'd be happy to do that, so. Any other questions?
I have a comment, though.
Okay.
And this isn't an easy comment, but I'm going to make it anyway. But I want you to know, as the head of this council, I'm going to commit to this community that going forward, decisions like we've talked about tonight, that commit large sums of city taxpayer dollars to use, will come before the citizens of Longview, to be discussed and possibly voted on. Because I think without a plan to fund things, government cannot be efficient, and I do not think it's appropriate to have things that we can't afford. And we need to be very cautious in this economic times right now. I know I'm looking, I know this council is too, this is a very conservative and a very intelligent council. We're looking at every line item of this budget, from the type of paper your water bills are printed on, that we've discussed, to technology expenses, to funding these projects that we've talked about. No stone will be left unturned to find the money to fund the things that we want to have in Longview, but it's going to take a cooperative effort. Our incomes have reduced, we've seen that. Our sales taxes are falling, and they're going to continue to fall. We can plan on that. So I'm going to encourage all of our citizens to help us out here. Shop local, help our city. It's easy to go online, it's easy to go to other cities and shop, but we need our citizens helping our community, shopping local, and supporting our community, because otherwise we will not have the monies next year to fund another budget. So I'm encouraging us, and I'm asking us, to be proactive in this as we are in this budget cycle. David, you did a very nice job presenting this budget. I appreciate you and all the staff that's been involved in this.
Thank you.
I know it has not been easy. Any other comments, council? We shall move on. Okay. Items of community interest. Mr. Moore?
There is nothing more important that the staff does and this council does than prepare a budget and adopt a budget each and every year. It affects every one of us every day of our lives. So I would encourage, I assume this presentation will be on the website?
Yes, sir.
I would encourage the public to go on the city website, look this over, jot down some questions that you may have, because, folks, it's your money, it's our money. We need your input. I mean, these are going to be some trying time. Next year, 16, 17, is going to be even more trying. So I would encourage you to attend these budget sessions, give us your input, and together, as the mayor said, we can make this a fantastic community, a better community. Thank you.
Ms. Snuddy.
I concur.
Ms. Williams?
Happy convention to the dynamic divas of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. We just celebrated our 52nd convention. It was fabulous. We are a women's service organization dedicated to political service and education. And although our membership is limited, I do encourage everyone in our community get involved. Your voice is needed, we need your support as we move forward in Longview. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ishihara?
Yes, I do. Actually, I am requesting some help. Many of you have heard us talk about code enforcement issues in the past, so if you have a neighbor that has an overgrown yard or something that makes you unhappy, you may call our code enforcement department. And unfortunately, you know, the best solution we often have is to find them, to help them hopefully solve that problem themselves if they can, but sometimes that individual may be an elderly person or have a medical issue, or have some reason that they cannot physically and financially handle that issue themselves. There are a couple homes that I've become aware of that are in my district or around the city that have those issues. We did one workday last Saturday, and I left a lot of bulky item pickup, I'm sorry. At that particular home, I did offer to pay Roland for it, just so y'all know, but...
It's free right now, don't be shy. No need to apologize.
But I used all of my friend favors getting that job done last Saturday, and I have another home that is in desperate need, a woman who's up in her years and has some medical issues, and she needs help on her yard. So I need to recruit about five to 10 more new friends to help me this coming Saturday, August 1st, from 8 to 11, to do some yard work. It's nothing that if, you know, you do your own yard work, it's nothing you can't handle. But anyway, that's my contact information up there. Please call me if you can help for a little bit of time at all, 903-399-1178, and I would really, really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Wright?
Mr. Willard, your staff, great job. Thank you. That's a great start, we've got a lot of hard work left, but appreciate all the work you've done.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen. He's not here. Does anyone know what he looks like?
Can I make a motion to excuse Mr. Allen?
Please.
Sack, sack.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Call opposed?
Okay. Okay, a few things. The Longview Public Library is in need of artificial greenery, trees and shrubs and ivy, et cetera, to help us build Jurassic World for Halloween. Donations can be dropped off at the library at 222 West Cotton. Also, there'll be a reception this Friday at Ma'at Ka from 2 to 4 honoring our retiring police chief, Chief Dingler. So please come out and express your support for Chief Dingler and all that he has meant to our community. Also, I want to commend everyone that was involved with the Great Texas Bloom Race this weekend. It was an amazing event. I was overwhelmed at the participation, at the level of volunteerism, the concerts were fantastic, but the level of participation absolutely blew me away. Saturday night was, it was just amazing, and I want to see that extend and expand, and I know Dan Droger is here, and Dan, I want to commend you on a fantastic job done by your committee and all that you did. I can tell you, I wasn't able to be there Friday night because I had a prior commitment, but I went Saturday and I was saddened that I wasn't there Friday night. That's how much fun it was, it was really a great time. So I encourage you all to come next year, even though we won't have the nationals, we'll still have all the great fun that's involved with the Great Texas Bloom Race. So please make it a point to come next year. Okay, I know you all have been on pins and needles. Survey. Here you go. This is, and I'm going to tell you, amazing responses to these surveys. We had over 1,000 responders to this survey this week, in three days. Here was the questions. What issues do you feel are most pressing in Longview, rank in order of importance? And your choices were repairing roads, extending our trail system, addressing public safety, attracting new business to Longview, sprucing up our gateways and entrances on I-20, and addressing poverty. And I was very impressed that we had so many respondees. Y'all know what the answers were? It was great. Number one, which is exactly what we've been talking about, attracting new business to Longview. That is essential to our growth and development, it's essential to our revenues, it's essential to us proceeding forward and growing as a community. So I'm glad that our citizens, at least the 1,000-plus that responded, see the same way that we are trying to see this. Number two, addressing public safety, which we are effectively doing as we speak. Number three was addressing poverty, which is certainly in need in our community. Number four, repairing our roads. Number five was sprucing up our gateways, and number six was expanding our trail systems. So those are all really, really good initiatives that we need to be focused on, all of them, but we see how our city is prioritizing these, these activities. Okay, what's your favorite type of vacation? This is pretty, pretty interesting. Snow skiing, beach, European tour, or a staycation? What do you think won? Overwhelmingly beach, 57%. I was, I was pretty surprised. Staycation came in a close third, just so you know.
Is it with or without sharks?
Okay, now, I've been asked a lot of questions about these surveys. Understand, these are impromptu, these are, the reason I do these surveys is because they give me real-time feedback and responses to some pressing issues that I think our city is dealing with. The comprehensive plan surveys are great, and these are in no way taking the place of those surveys. The comprehensive plan was a long-term visionary plan. These are present-day needs that I'm looking at, just to see where our citizens stand, to see where we should be going forward, and to see what direction we need to be taking. And I appreciate all of you that are taking the time to respond and give me your input, because you don't just click the button. You know you're responding to, and I appreciate that input, because I'm trying to respond back to you as rapidly as we can, but it's pretty overwhelming. But I appreciate all that input, and I appreciate our citizens being engaged, and it's fun for me to engage with you. So, okay, that being it, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you for being here.